All right, good evening, everybody. We're going to call to order the work session on March 19, 2024. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. All school board members are in attendance. Next, recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, you'll see that there's a number of presentations on the agenda. Before we start those presentations, I just want to make sure that the board recognizes that the administration understands that there's a lot of information to be presented here this evening. If after tonight's meeting, there's any additional information that you need, please reach out to me or Ms. Cancro, and we'll follow up with that prior to the voting meeting. So with that said, I want to make sure that everyone, you know, recognizes that, you know, we certainly don't want to keep you here all night, but there's some important matters that we have to share with you and that we need your consideration in terms of voting. So the first matter is bond refinancing parameters. At the finance committee meeting this past week, we heard from PFM, Public Financial Management, who presented a resolution that's on the agenda for your approval. Tonight, Mr. Bricker is going to briefly review that with you, and he has John Cox from our bond counsel to answer any questions if you have. Mr. Bricker?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. This month, your approval will be Resolution 24-01. This is a parameters bond resolution, which is basically setting the terms that would allow the school districts, PFM and Bond Counsel and Underwriter, all to refinance some of our callable bonds. The goal is to find interest rates lower when we get them, and per the resolution, the minimum net gain or reduction in interest will be $175,000. We presented this to the finance where Zach gave an example. In his example, there was only $160,000, and in that case, we would not refinance it. However, if we had 250, whatever the number is, as long as it's above the $175,000, we could then execute the parameters bond refinancing the callable bonds, and it would just be pieces of them, not the whole bond themselves.
So before we take questions, just so everyone knows that on a regular basis, as our financial advisors are designed to do, is to advise us on when we can save money as part of any of refinancing possibilities. And tonight, like in the past years, PFM has come to us, made this recommendation, and it basically sets the parameters for us to be able to save money in the future if so interest rates decline. So questions to members of the board to my right? Any questions? Seeing no questions. How about to my left? Seeing no questions? Thank you, Mr. Bricker. Thank you, Mr. Cox. Next on the agenda, we have Dr. Sorgini. We have architect services recommendation. Dr. Sorgini?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Good evening. I'm here before you to present the recommendation of the committee test with evaluating architectural services as a component of the Mathacton High School campus planning process. It is the recommendation of the committee that the board approved Schrader Group of Philadelphia, PA, to serve as architect for the Mathacton High School campus planning process as presented, pending review of the contract by the solicitor. A request for proposals, or RFP, was prepared and issued on February 6, 2024. The RFP was advertised direct mail to nine architectural firms. A pre-proposal meeting and tour of the high school was held on February 8, 2024. This was attended by representatives from three firms. Four proposals were received by the deadline of February 19, 2024. Those proposals came from Breslin Architects, Crabtree Roarball and Associates, KCBA Architects, and Schrader Group. The evaluation of the proposals was a multi-step process. The initial review was conducted by administration based upon the responsiveness to the RFP requirements, which included organization and project team, firm competency, process, work schedule, insurance, and fee proposal. All four firms were invited to participate in an initial review interview on March 4, 2024. This included a presentation to the interview committee by each firm. The two highest scoring firms then advanced to the third step in the process. On March 12, 2024, an update on the process was provided at the property committee. On March 14, 2024, the two shortlisted firms met with the interview committee and provided answers to pre-prepared questions. The interview committee was comprised of representatives of the Board of School Directors and the administration. Firms were evaluated based on rubric criteria, and a finalist firm, Schrader Group, was recommended by the committee. The fee structure provided by Schrader Group is identified on the slide. Please note that the fee is not applicable to change orders. Schrader Group provides a highly credentialed staff with significant K-12 design experience at all levels of the firm. They provide strong consultants with prior Mathacton and Morsester Township experience. They have well-defined quality assurance and quality control processes in order to produce the highest level bid documents and minimize change orders. They have an established working relationship with Dewey Engineering, having completed multiple similar projects in Pennsylvania. And the principal project manager, David Bradbury, who will be working with us through the entire project, is a resident of Mathacton School District. So with all of that in mind, it is the recommendation of the committee that the board approve Schrader Group of Philadelphia, PA, to serve as the architect for the upcoming Mathacton High School Campus Planning Process as presented, pending the review of the finalized contract by the solicitor. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sorgini. Before we take questions from members of the board, I just want to thank members of the board that participated on the interview committee. That does take a lot of time out of your personal schedule. I just want to thank you for your time in that, and as well, the administration for doing that work. I believe that, you know, we are in a very unique and well-suited position to be able to leverage the expertise and experience of the Schrader Group to help us whichever path we choose going forward. So with that said, are there any questions from members of the group to my right? Ms. Clary?
Dr. Sorgini, what prior experience does the team have with Mathacton and Morsester? What's behind that?
With Mathacton, part of that was working with us, with the civil engineer. They had worked with us previously on other projects, and also they have experience working in Morsester on several projects, one large residential project and another ongoing project that is currently taking place at the intersection of 363 and Germantown Pike.
Okay. And then the other question I have is, did the administration request four or five years of professional liability loss runs, insurance loss runs from Schrader?
Yes, we did.
Okay. And I'm assuming that you reviewed those. Was there any claims of significance, let's say over $25,000?
We reviewed them, and there were not.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winters.
Yeah, just a quick question. You highlighted that the fee is not applicable to project change orders. Was that a unique part of the quote?
Not necessarily unique, but worth pointing out, the fee is applied only to hard costs of construction and not the soft costs or the change order, so it's important to note.
Thank you.
Any other questions to my right? Mr. Mersky?
Just remember how to turn on the mic. Were they the recommended firm, the low-cost bidder, or?
They were.
Okay. Is it possible to see the rubric? I know that there was a rubric that was accumulated by the committee.
I can provide that to the board.
I'd be interested in seeing it.
Any other questions to my right? Seeing none to my left? Any questions? Ms. Padu?
I'm so sorry. I was not pressing the right button. I just have a question for you. You mentioned there were two top, the two. What was the other one?
The other firm was KCBA.
Okay. And then what I had for you was on one of your slides in reference to the reimbursable expenses. What's included there?
For, as far as reimbursable expenses, those include other things such as travel that is required out of the general area by the school district, anything that would include any lodging during that or meals, and those types of costs. So we are able to keep those quite low.
I'm sorry, now that I know how to work my mic again. So the firm is located here in Philadelphia, right?
That is correct. And actually, they are in the process of moving to Conshohocken, so slightly even closer. I do not anticipate that there would be any significant travel unless we were asking them to go somewhere to see something related to the project.
Okay. Just because I wanted to clarify, is even based on where they're located now, is coming to Mathacton considered traveling like out of their normal scope?
No, that would be within the normal scope and associated with their fee.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions to my left? Ms. Thiel?
Now you have me overthinking the microphone. So one question I just have, just because it might be interesting for the public to hear too. Is there any school districts or schools that this firm has worked on before that we could connect to or anything?
Yes, they built the new Upper Marion High School, also Springfield Township, as well as Hatboro-Horsham. They did Keith Valley Middle School, a renovation at Phoenixville, the Reading STEM Academy, and the Great Valley 56 Center.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Any other questions to my left? Seeing none? One more question to my right. Ms. Graff?
Yeah, I just want to say, Dr. Sorgini, you and Mr. Kenwood did a fantastic job on this. I know we were moving forward pretty quickly, and I think you did a great job, and I'm super happy to hear that we selected the low-cost provider.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions? Thank you, Dr. Sorgini. Next on the agenda, we have a branding vendor recommendation. Ms. Kelly?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi, and good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you this evening. With your approval, Mathacton School District, our schools, our school community, will take an important step forward in telling our story of pride, Mathacton School District's spirit and branding. So let's jump right into it. In this presentation, I will be sharing recommendations for consideration of a vendor to provide branding services to the Mathacton School District. I'll provide some background on that vendor, as well as the methodology for the selection process. In addition, I'll be sharing the deliverables for this process, the stakeholders necessary to support the work, the cost, and the timeline. So on Slide 3, this month, the board is asked to consider the following recommendation. Approve Iris Creative Group, Inc. of Fort Washington, Pennsylvania, to provide branding services as outlined in the attached agreement at a cost of $64,700. And on Slide 4, this next slide provides an example of one challenge we face as related to branding. These images show some of the various ways we have represented the Mathacton brand over the years. Two areas of improvement from our recent communications audit focused on the district and our school's brand identity. It was suggested that we clearly define the Mathacton brand and what it stands for, and develop Mathacton School District brand guidelines to maintain consistency. On Slide 5, this slide provides an example of the brand identity potential available to us. As part of the brand identity work, a committee of stakeholders would help brainstorm the ideas of how we should visually present ourselves. The primary focus is to create consistency and unity in any application of our visual identity. On Slide 6, as related to the vendor selection process, we researched the top Pennsylvania high schools in the five county region. This included public and private schools. From that research, we contacted the top frequently used vendors for an initial pitch. Three vendors provided a pitch to the district: the Leapfrog Group of Erdenheim, Pennsylvania; Iris Creative Group, Inc. of Fort Washington, Pennsylvania; and Creosote Effects of Emmitsburg, Maryland. We shared with them that we are considering making improvements to our visual brand and our marketing. With that assignment, each came up with a pitch that included their experience, what we could expect in the process, and the similar work they've done with other organizations. After careful consideration, Iris Creative emerged as the top choice based on their experience with local public schools and other nonprofits, the time commitment required for the process, and the cost of services. A meeting was scheduled in late February, and the firm presented to the Executive Communications Committee, which is comprised of district stakeholders, including professional staff, support staff, parents, alumni, administration, and board. I'll go into greater detail about this stakeholder group later in the presentation. So an overview of Iris Creative. The company is led by Beth Brodowski, who serves as the president and would be our point of contact throughout the branding process. Beth is here tonight, and you'll hear from her in a bit. The company was founded in 1996 and has an 11-member team that includes experts in strategy, design, copywriting, marketing, social media, video, web development, and search engine optimization. Iris Creative specializes in brand development and relationship communications for organizations across various sectors, including education, healthcare, and arts and culture. On the next slide, as you can see from all of these services offered by Iris Creative, they focus their work on four main specialties: brand strategy and identity, print and digital publications, events, and campaign marketing, and marketing support. In the next slide, you will see an example of Iris Creative's portfolio. The company has been a longtime branding vendor for Lower Marion School District. The company recently supported that district and their visual identity development work when Lower Marion opened their new middle school. They developed new logos through idea gathering from a stakeholder process, and also developed the style guide on the application of the new logos, brand colors, and fonts. On the next slide, some of their other past clients include Unionville Chad's Ford School District on brand strategy and identity for the Unionville High School. They've worked with Yale Law School on events and campaign marketing. They've provided marketing support to Rockford University, and supported Einstein Healthcare Network with their print and digital publications, among others. So on this next slide, Iris Creative Group uses the AMIE, or AMIE, process framework to guide all of their brand strategy projects. AMIE stands for Audience, Message, Image, and Experience. This methodology emphasizes the importance of defining what sets us apart and creating an alignment with our audience's values. To understand and define the audience, stakeholder sessions are conducted, and a persona development exercise is facilitated. These sessions seek to uncover strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and gaps in communication, and explore key audiences and the desirable actions we want those audiences to take. To develop the brand positioning and key messaging, the stakeholder group will work together to create statements that define what we do and why we do it in ways that differentiates the districts and communicates what makes our district unique. As related to our visual image, earlier in the presentation, you saw the challenge we face with the various images that remain in the public domain that represent our district over a short time. Iris Creative would support us in the process of streamlining our visual brand identity by creating a unified image that could be applied consistently across the district, our schools, and departments. And the fourth phase of this process focuses on experience. Because the district has already conducted a communications audit and possesses a communications plan, Iris Creative would use that information as a tool to develop our new communications strategy. This process defines communications goals for each of the key audiences, covering three critical stages of communication. What do we want them to know? What do we want them to feel? And what do we want them to do? For each of these stages, we develop an objective, strategies, tactics, and measurements. And at this time, I'll bring Ms. Brodowski in to provide a little bit more context around the deliverables, as well as why putting a structure around our brand is important.
Thank you very much, Amanda. Hi, I am Beth Brodowski, the president of Iris Creative, and I am happy to have the opportunity to present to you and answer any questions that you have for us today. So the branding process that we have designed for the district is presented in a way to give people and the community that are involved some opportunity to weigh in and participate while also managing budget and time. As some of you may be aware, there's also a need to develop a new website project, and we have to accommodate the timeline of this project so that that project can also be completed in time for the transition to be made for that. So the process includes bringing in groups of stakeholders of both adults and students in a structured way to allow for feedback, participation, involvement, and for the people that are the stakeholders to have a voice and speak on behalf of the community. We will be then taking that and using the information we get out of that to develop what we call personas, which is a way to take all of the many, many people that are important for the district to speak to and to care about, and get a sense of what are the strongest priorities? Who do we need to make sure that we're communicating with? And what do they need to understand? When we have that information, we'll be able to then develop key messaging, and we're going to do that in two different segments. One is organizational messages, so that we'll have clarity around the brand of the district, as Amanda said, what you do and why you do it, which I know seems very obvious, but it's about defining those things in a way that clarifies what makes this district special and unique and distinctive. And I always want to make sure that we get down to what is truly distinctive, not just what's true. When we have that information, we'll then be able to move into what we call key messaging or marketing messaging. Once all of this brand work is done, it needs to be brought to life. At the far ends of our process, we have audience, on one hand, understanding who the people are, and then on the opposite end, once all of this work is done, it needs to be disseminated and delivered. And so we need to make sure that we are understanding the strategic goals of the district, the audiences that we need to serve, so that when marketing is designed to communicate with them, we're making sure that we're meeting their needs and understanding what their goals are in communicating with them. So at the end of this process, we will have clarity around core messaging, clarity around audience messaging and marketing messaging. We will have an entirely new set of structured logos, graphics, typography, color palettes that are then documented. We will have tools and files to work with. And then the last piece of the project will be a documented launch plan, so that the transition can be communicated well to the appropriate audiences, as well as a communication strategy plan, so that Amanda can both begin to fill in the gaps that the brand discovers are needed to be communicated, as well as begin to transition all of the many, many materials that are going to have to be transitioned over the course of time. We'll use that tool to help prioritize what needs to be created before launch, what needs to be ready to go within the first three months after launch, and what can safely roll out slowly over time to begin to evolve the brand. We always say branding is a process, not a project, and once I'm gone, Amanda and her team will continue to move things on. And our job is to make sure that the district is structured well, so that the in-house team and all of the stakeholders have the tools they need to effectively make this brand come to life. come to life.
Right, thank you. Next slide. So, as you can see, so who are the individuals who will help guide the work that we would do with Iris Creative if they are approved? As I mentioned earlier, an Executive Communications Committee of District Stakeholders was formed that includes teachers, support staff, parents, community members, alumni, and members of the board. Ms. Brodowski delivered a presentation in person to this group late last month. The group would come together to make final decisions within the process. Then, there would be two larger stakeholder groups that would need to be established for the workshops on key messaging, audience development, and visual identity. One stakeholder group would be comprised of the Executive Communications Committee members and additional staff, parents, alumni, and community members. The second group would be comprised of students, eighth grade and up. The communications office would serve as the liaison between the executive committee and the vendor, sharing information and soliciting feedback throughout the process. So, as you can see on page 13, each phase of the branding process is broken down and defines who was responsible for the work, the activity, the time commitment, and, if approved by the board, when the work would begin. In total, this process is anticipated to take approximately five months. On page 14, these are the line item costs related to all four phases of the brand-focused process. The total cost is $64,700. On the next slide, page 15, you will see $150,000 highlighted in red. The board had approved this budget for the communication services in the current fiscal year, and the cost of the vendor services would be applied here. All right, Slide 16. So, to summarize the timeline up to this point, in January, we contacted and interviewed vendors. In February, we received and reviewed proposals from the vendors. On February 28th, we brought the top vendor before the Executive Communications Committee. Last week, this information was presented to the Finance Committee. Tonight, the full Board of School Directors is asked to consider moving forward Iris Creative Group for approval. Should the board vote to approve this vendor, work would commence in April. And to wrap up, all of us here tonight and those listening at home know that Methacton School District is an excellent choice for families in our community. It is our job to get that message out and show everyone that this is a great place to work and live and learn. As we move forward, we are confident that partnering with Iris Creative will elevate Methacton's brand identity and our efforts to tell our stories of pride. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Are there questions from members of the board to my left? Ms. Austin?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. Just a comment, the same one that I had made at the committee meeting, that I think in terms of adult group, there is, including alumni, is a really important piece of that adult group, because they, you know, the alumni really care about the story that we're telling and will continue to tell. So, just to make that comment, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Austin. Any other comments or questions to my left? Ms. Purdue?
I just have a quick question on the selection of stakeholders. Do we have a system for how we'll do that?
So, can I have you step in and say what the best method might be? Sure, thank you. So, it's important to make sure that we look at all of the stakeholders, and so, we have sort of a leadership committee first, which is, you know, Dr. Zerbe and Amanda, and there may be a few other people that are on the, what did you have your name for it?
The Executive Communications Committee.
Yeah, so there's a small executive communications committee, and we will meet with them first to make sure that we have each of the groups represented, just like, you know, alumni is an important group, and make sure that we haven't missed anybody or that there are different people that need to be brought in. The important thing about that is we want even representation of different people. If it's not even, one voice can bubble up and be stronger, and especially when there's in-person communication, when voices are overly weighted in one direction, sometimes the momentum can move that direction. We want to make sure that each voice, each different role, each different type of stakeholder feels heard in that. And so, we will look at each of the groups, and then I will rely on the in-house staff to help us identify who are the right representatives of those groups to bring in.
Okay, thank you. And then, my last question is, in reference to the five-month process, based on the diagram that you shared on the table, there's hours linked to it. I'm just wondering, is that the summation of hours that we expect, or is there more? I'm just wondering if the total price reflects total number?
Wouldn't it be great if it did? No, what that slide is intended to represent is that we're inviting people to come in and participate. So, these are volunteers, and I want to make sure that we're being respectful of their time, and also that they understand what they're committing to over the course of five months. So, it's a long period of time, but for the volunteer members of our committees, there's a couple of hours here and a couple of hours here to participate in active live workshops. The executive committee, Amanda, myself, and the other people, will have significantly more work to do in between each of those sessions. And then, there's also the phase of the graphic design and identity building stage, which happens within my office and takes many more hours.
No, thank you. I figured that, I just wanted to make sure I had that. Thank you.
Any other questions to my left? Ms. Theo?
Yeah, I don't know if this is more of a question or a comment, and I'm just going to say it, and you can confirm or deny or share the response to it. This sounds like, this sounds very exciting, honestly, gathering the community together and receiving their input and gathering from different stakeholders, right? And I guess the one thing that comes to my mind is, when we look at stakeholders and there's alumni and community members without children, and parents, and then students, I guess I would be excited to make sure that the student representation, the family representation, includes multiple different types of family, like students who are headed to college, maybe alumni who've gone to college, students who have gone into the trades, and alumni who've gone into the trades, students with, who have needed special education services, that kind of thing, like making sure that we get those microgroups represented as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments to my left? Saying none to my right? Thank you, Beth, and thank you, Amanda. Well done. Next on the agenda, we have Dr. Gravenese. She's here to present the Special Education Comprehensive Plan. Please note that this is not a matter for which you will approve this month. It's designed to sit for a period of time, and it'd be on, it'd be voting item in the April voting agenda. Dr. Gravenese?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me tonight. I would like to take you on a little journey for the Special Ed Comprehensive Plan, so you can see the work that we've done and where we're going. So, what we did was started with a group, our Steering Committee, and the names are on the screen behind you there, trying to capture the feedback from anyone who would like to be part of our team as we worked to finalize how we're going to achieve our three goals, which I'm going to get to in a moment. So, just so we're all using the same common language, our Special Education Comprehensive Plan is an action plan that describes our commitment to special education and quality education for each student. So, it's a three-year plan, and we have many different ways to get there, and there's many different facets that are associated with it. But what we did with special education, there are different sorts of monitoring, cyclical monitoring. At this time, right now, we are in between monitoring cycles, so we do not have any active areas of improvement that are needed. So, what I did was, I reached out to our contact at the Bureau of Special Education and said, hey, I'm trying to work through this, I wanted to get your feedback. And our representative shared, given that we are not in corrective action, she would like to see, based on our data, us look at three suggested areas of focus. So, the first is to improve post-secondary transition planning for students, families, and staff. And so, again, just so we're all using the same common language, secondary transition is preparing students for life after high school. Transition planning begins at age 14 and can be considered like a bridge between school and the opportunities that exist outside of school. As we met with our stakeholder group, the areas that we received feedback on are to have annual Indicator 13 training for staff, incorporate the Pennsylvania Transition Checklist to all transition-age students, explicit instruction for families in the area of transition at annual IEP meetings, researching options for partners in transition services for students, and creating a roadmap for parents with timelines, resources, and responsibilities. Our second area of focus is to increase participation rates on state assessments to 95% for students with IEPs. So, there are three potential state assessments. The first is the PASSA, I'm sorry, the first is the PSSA. Every Pennsylvania student in grade three through eight is assessed in English and Language Arts and Math, and every student in grades four and eight is assessed in Science. With the PASSA, it's the Pennsylvania Alternative State System of Assessment, I apologize. It's developed to meet the needs of students with the most significant cognitive disability who aren't able to participate in the traditional assessment. And the lastly is the Keystone Exam, which is an end-of-term exam for students as they complete Algebra I, English 10, and Biology. Our previous data from the last cycle, from, this is the 21-22 school year, indicated that while we were above the state participation rate, we didn't hit 95% in each area of the exam. So, the feedback from our stakeholder group was for each of the assessments to meet with case managers to determine the qualifying factors for the targeted students, and communicate at IEP meetings with students, families, teachers, and liaise all of the expectations. At the IEP meetings, we would also determine any necessary accommodations and which ones are appropriate, and then communicate the testing windows to families frequently, and to work with counseling teams to plan for any sort of anxiety, pre- and post-test associated with the testing. The final area of focus for our plan is reviewing the educational environments. So, review a continuum of supports, services, programs, and procedures for determining out-of-district placements for students with significant needs. So, again, common language, a continuum of supports is a range in educational placements in which a student's IEP can be implemented to meet their individual needs. I'm going to show you a sample of what a continuum looks like from a neighboring district. It goes from the least restrictive to the most restrictive at the top of the triangle. The feedback that we received was, we should complete an audit of our current educational supports and services, as well as an audit of the needs of our currently out-of-district-placed students and our current students. We want to ensure appropriate MTSS processes are in place. We want to create sensory options for students at all schools. We want to ensure a continuum of services exists for all students, as well as continue with our Universal Design for Learning Training for teachers. So, those are the three areas of focus our plan is going to be focused on, but the actual comprehensive plan has a lot of other areas in which we have to report out on, one of which is incarcerated student oversight. So, the Montgomery County Correctional Facility is located within the boundaries of Methacton School District, so we have to share out on any students in the prison program run through the IU that are being educated. And just to clarify, it's not Methacton students there, it's any students that are located within the correctional facility. We have to report out on the least restrictive environment and how the district is continuing to focus its efforts on improving inclusive practices within our schools. We have to share what our details are regarding out-of-district placements. So, sometimes students have circumstances where their needs are greater than what we're able to support, and a student is placed out of district, so we have to report out on all of that. Additionally, we have to share out on positive behavior supports. So, we partner currently with ABA agencies, mental health counselors, intensive mental health clinicians, speech and language consultants, all to support the emotional and social needs of our students with disabilities. And we're also, as I mentioned, working to articulate the MTSS process for teachers and students as students flex between tiered supports. We have to report out on our educational program, our caseloads and facilities, so each special education teacher and the caseload that they have associated with them. It's not student names, however, they do ask us for the specific areas of disability and how many students are on each case manager's caseload. They also ask for each classroom a student with a disability could potentially be educated in, as well as the specific square footage for that room, as there are laws associated with that. They ask for a special education support services, so it's a roster of the People's Services Department, so it's a list of every district and contracted employee that provide services, supports, or related services to our students. And the last part of the plan is professional development. It's a three-year plan. So, this is specifically going to be tied to what our three areas of focus on are. So, the seven areas of professional development that we, as a district, must include in our planning include autism, positive behavior support, paraprofessional training, transition, science of literacy, parent trainings, IEP development, and instructional practices. So, within that, we need to make sure that we are covering each of those seven topics in our three-year plan. With our timeline, so in February, our stakeholder group met and provided feedback. We provided a draft of this presentation, as well as, I'm sorry, we provided a draft of this presentation to the Ed Committee, advisement to you tonight. And tomorrow, I'll be meeting with the Special Education Alliance to talk through the details to our three focus areas and the plan. It has to sit publicly for 28 days, so starting on March 21st. That will be on the website, as well as at Farina. And then, in April, we'll be presented to you for approval, and with that is a signing of an affidavit saying that you are committing us to be able to deliver these services for the next three years. And then, on May 1st, it is submitted to the state. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Gravenese. Are there questions from members of the board to my left? Ms. Purdue?
Thank you for the presentation. I had one that I didn't ask already at that committee. Hopefully, we didn't ask it, but I wanted to clarify, in reference to the 28 days, Farina and also, will it be available online?
Yes.
And then, how can parents or members of the community provide feedback?
That's a great question. They are welcome to email me or any of the special education supervisors if they have any sort of questions or comments. With the posting, we will make sure to put directions on there as well, so they know how to get in touch with us if they have any questions. We've had stakeholders were part of this process for outlining, we had our three areas that were provided to us by the Bureau of Special Ed, but the stakeholders provided feedback on the kinds of things they'd like to see within our programming under those headings, so we tried to incorporate all of that as we built the three focus areas.
I was looking on one of the other school districts, and they actually have the plan on their website, but then, there's also a form, right? So, it's like, you know what I'm talking about, it's just like you can put in your information, your name, and then also provide your feedback there.
Sure.
So, instead of maybe the email, is that something that we can consider? I know Amanda's not here, but I'm wondering if that could be another option?
Absolutely.
Best option is to provide an email so that we can verify from the sender. Sometimes, the forms aren't necessarily doing that unless we have an application that does that, yeah.
And then, can I just ask one other question? In reference to the areas to focus on, when, because we are not in corrective action, do we receive any documentation that gives us guidance as far as what the areas of focus are on at all?
So, our Bureau of Special Education representative's name is Carrie Ziegler. That's who I reached out to. We had a phone call where she looked at our data, looked at our previous plan, and she was the one to share with us that, given the good shape that we were in, these are the areas in which she'd like to see us continue to grow.
Did you have access to that document?
Yes, so, on the one slide I showed you, the 21-22 state assessment participation rate. It was, it's old at this point, you know what I mean? But because we're in between cycles, we don't have updated-to-date-right-now data, so she used that data, as well as looked at our specific other areas, and from there, gave us her recommendation.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions to my left? Ms. Theo?
Hi, thank you for the presentation again. Just a comment, just to, because I see it, and sometimes it takes me time to think through things, and I didn't share this at the Ed Committee meeting. And I didn't share this at the Ed Committee meeting, but just seeing some of the areas where things can be pulled together, with one of the goals being education environment, least restrictive inclusion, and also the science of literacy. There are strategies that combine those that can be great tools and teacher toolboxes for coaching. One is SRSD, self-regulated strategy development. It is a writing strategy that is supported by the What Works Clearinghouse and has very high levels of peer review. And it not only teaches writing, it was developed for students who have IEP goals in writing. But it demonstrates with peer review to actually grow writing skills for all students. It combines like emotional regulation with writing and a very positive attitude. It's wonderful, really, there's a lot of free training actually online. It's thinksrsd.org, and it can be applied with science, too, with STEEL standards. And it would be a tool in the toolbox for tools for all teachers who are working for inclusion, no matter what content area, and also help with those writing scores. So I just wanted to share that because it would pull together some pieces in here that might be useful.
I appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other comments, Ms. Alston?
Thank you for the presentation. I'm just looking, just one question about the members of the steering committee. I recognize a lot of these names, some I don't. And I guess if this presentation is going to be posted, would it be possible to consider putting what roles the people are in our community? Are they parents, teachers, administrators? Maybe they're multiple, maybe they're a board member and a parent, or something like that. So it would just be good to see how the steering committee is representative of the community.
Absolutely, we collected that information with the sign-ups, so we could happily do that.
Thank you, Ms. Cankrow.
I wanted to say thank you very much for this. I am very happy to see that we're not in corrective action. I think that really shows how great we're doing in special education, really working on the inclusive practices that we started to put in, the MTSS, the REACH programs, the behavioral programs that you're putting in. So I think that really should go, that shouldn't be unnoticed, because they really have worked hard. And all the special ed administrators, the teachers, you know, the support staff. So that is fantastic, and it's not usual, most districts are in some corrective action. So it is fantastic to hear that, so I want to really show that one. I love the three areas that you guys are, that are being focused on. And so I would love, like even in like six months or a year, just to get updates on where you are all going and what the statuses are in each of these areas, because these are very nice focus goals that I do think they will be attainable for you. I think it's a lot of work to do, but I'd like to see your progress.
I appreciate that. I have an action plan that's being drafted with each sub-area, you know, the different components for each that we're looking to hit, who's responsible, what the timeline is, and when we need to do it. There's a lot of moving pieces to this, so we really need a guide to be able to do that. That's part of tomorrow, what I'll be sharing with the SEA, as they've been working with me on these goals, giving a lot of their feedback. So I really think you need a plan to be able to hit it all. But I'd be happy to share that with you once it's finished.
Yeah, definitely. I feel like you've got very targeted statements in here and actions I think could be, I think it's a nice roadmap for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions to my right? Ms. Clary?
Well, I'm going to start by saying that Ms. Graff and I are ecstatic that you have an action plan. Like, I just love, we just, we collectively love that, so we would love to see that.
Absolutely.
So I just have a couple of questions. I'm going to say I apologize, because I do this a lot, but acronyms. So I need you to help me with a couple, so I can really understand the presentation. On an LEA?
The Local Education Agency. I apologize.
No, it's a learning curve for me. And then I have two more. MTSS?
It's a multi-tiered system of approach for students' academics or behaviors. And there's tiers one, two, and three. And students can flex between the tiers, dependent upon their level of intensity with supports needed.
Okay. And then the last one was when you were talking about positive behavior supports. We partner with ABA agencies. Is that the, to me, that says the American Bar Association. What does that say to you?
Oh, ABA, I'm sorry, off the top of my head, I don't have that one. It's a specific form of
Applied Behavior Analysis.
Thank you, thank you. Applied Behavior Analysis, thank you. High five, Jen, thank you.
It's funny how different acronyms mean so many different things.
Yes, they're sorry about that.
Nope, thank you, that's it.
I thought that was the American Basketball Association.
Nope, the bar.
Any other comments or questions to my right? Seeing none, Dr. Gravenese, thank you so much for the presentation. And as she mentioned, this will be posted to the district website, and it'll be placed at the Farina Administration Building for review for the next 28 days. Next on the agenda, we have Dr. Zorgini. Dr. Zorgini is back this evening to provide a presentation on our technology staffing recommendation. Dr. Zorgini?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. I want to say first, we are aware of the static sound that you're hearing while I am presenting. Mr. Washington in the back is resetting your microphones up on the dais. So you will not be able to click in while I'm presenting, but it should not affect my microphone, and we hope that it will fix it. So I just want to let you know that. All right, good evening again. I am presenting a recommendation to adjust the staffing within the Technology Department effective July 1st of 2024 to meet the increased reliance that has come about with regard to technology since 2020. What you see on the screen is a representation of the current department structure and technology. Over the next series of slides, we will see at a high level a look at each of the current technology positions and the current incarnation. The information contained is a summary list and not exhaustive of the day-to-day responsibilities of each of the roles. The Director of Technology and Child Accounting oversees the responsibilities of the Technology Department, as well as child accounting, under which the central registrar is positioned. Mr. Bill Branick, the Director of Technology, is responsible to supervise and manage all aspects of the department. Currently, the Coordinator of Technology supports the district in technical integrations among various district resources. Mr. Christopher Kleingunther works with the Curriculum Department to establish integrations with curriculum resources and our ClassLink Launchpad for a single pane of glass for district access. He helps to plan and coordinate the specifications of district hardware and software and serves as the primary backup to the Network Administrator and Data Specialist in their absences. The Network Administrator is responsible to oversee the district's network uptime, wireless access, and the maintenance and configuration of network switches, servers, and access points. Mr. David Uglow is also the lead individual administering the security camera system throughout the district, our district phone system, and all network infrastructure related to these platforms. The Data Specialist is the lead responsible to oversee the day-to-day management of PowerSchool, the district's student information system. Mrs. Linda Beeler is responsible to work with administrators and teachers to ensure the efficient operation of the system as our core platform for student data. As well, she is a key component on the onboarding and offboarding process with human resources, establishing email accounts and appropriate access to the student information system. Lastly, and critically important, Mrs. Beeler is responsible to gather, prepare, and enter all data in relations to the Pennsylvania Information Management System, or PIMS, the acronym is PIMS. Throughout the year, there are a significant number of reports that are due that include but are not limited to the district's student enrollment count, special education count, child accounting, end-of-year collection, multiple safe schools reports, and also our course and instructor counts, as well as others. The Technology Specialist position in the district assists our primary end-users and supports them. These specialists are Mr. Kevin Pruszkowski, Mr. David Dehaven, and Mr. Christopher Washington, who is joining us in the back tonight. They are responsible for the daily engagement in and resolution to tickets that are entered by district employees when there are technology issues that need to be corrected. As well, the specialists assist in the management of district's student Chromebooks, including the administration of the repair process. The Technology Specialist also support in the implementation of hardware and software systems across the district. The Technology Department has the same level of staff and has had the same level of staff since prior to the COVID pandemic. Since the start of the pandemic, the district increased the number of student devices from 2,100 across the district to 4,600. Additionally, curriculum and district operations platform integrations have increased with regard to use and dependency on the technology network and resources. Pre-pandemic, there were only nine integrations. An integration is with regard to PowerSchool supplying student data or class information to the resources that are being utilized. So we went from nine to having 39 now integrations across multiple departments, with additions planned and future opportunities for growth. These integrations allow for resources to be more easily accessed, a streamlined workflow allowing student information system data to create accounts for students and for staff, and it also allows greater efficiencies in our facilities, financial services, and human resources departments. Since the pandemic, there is an ever-growing requirement to manage and address security threats and vulnerabilities. Cyber attacks tripled in K-12 education during the COVID pandemic and continue to increase at approximately 30% year-over-year. At the end of this year, our security cameras will have doubled in the past two years throughout the district. Our HVAC systems, facilities monitoring systems, student learning platform, phone system, and other education software continues to grow and have reliance on technology and network resources. And finally, PowerSchool, as our core resource and core system for student data, helps our ability to drive integrations and improve procedures. However, we need to continue to provide additional training and implement additional integrations as they come forward. Based on our growing technology needs, the recommended changes to the Technology Department are as follows. Appoint the current Coordinator of Technology to the role of Assistant Director of Technology. The Assistant Director of Technology will supervise the new core technical team, which will include the System Administrator, Network Administrator, and Data Specialists. This role will serve as the lead administrator on the network, system, and end-user device security, and will also lead the integration of district technologies. The person in this position will also have responsibility to work with district directors in leveraging the use of existing systems to improve our return on investment with technology. The System Administrator will take over a number of the day-to-day responsibilities currently identified in the Coordinator of Technology's role, including becoming responsible for district systems such as Office 365 and Google Workspace, assisting in the day-to-day support of existing integrations and implementing new integrations as they come forward, and acting as the backup to the Network Administrator and Data Specialist in relation to the student information system. This chart that is displayed provides a high-level overview of our current Coordinator of Technology role and responsibilities, and how they would be broken out into the new positions. So on the screen, the information that is in green denotes value added from our current structure. On the screen now is a representation of the recommended department structure. This structure represents the changes as proposed with the two new job descriptions. The associated costs with these changes total $139,965.04. On the screen, you see the variation between the current position with Coordinator of Technology and the two new positions, the Assistant Director and the System Administrator. Therefore, based on all of the needs within the Technology Department and the way in which it has grown especially over the last four years, it is recommended to approve the job descriptions of both Assistant Director of Technology and System Administrator effective July 1st of this year, to appoint Mr. Christopher Kleingunther, current Coordinator of Technology, to the position of Assistant Director of Technology, and to post for the System Administrator, both effective July 1, 2024. And finally, as a result of this restructuring, to eliminate the position of Coordinator of Technology, also effective July 1st. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zorgini. Other questions from members of the board to my right? Ms. Graff?
Yeah, I just want to say, I love this. This is a fantastic way to explain what we're doing, and I think it's really clear to me. I know it was a little bit confusing as to like who reports to who and all of these technology positions that are a lot of talk about, a lot of things I don't know a lot about. So I think this was a great way to explain, sort of, we're taking one position and creating two so that we can focus more and make sure that the district is protected from the cyber threats and other things that we've got that we have to really be careful about. So I just, I think this is a great thing, and I just want to thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Any other questions from members of the board to my right? Seeing none to my left, other questions? Ms. Thiel?
It's just more of a comment, and I just want to thank you so much for this. And I apologize, because I can't remember what newspaper the article was in, but it was literally just on the news that school districts are being targeted because of the amount of data that they have on students. And so it's timely to see this, and I just want to thank you for this presentation because that's really important stuff to protect, so thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no other comments, thank you, Dr. Zorgini.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have the Methacton High School Campus Planning Update. While I take my step to the podium, board members might want to just stretch their legs. I know we've sat through quite a few presentations, maybe show your socks. I know that we've had prepared to recognize in just a few days our support for World Down Syndrome Day. So with that, I'm going to take my spot at the podium. Members of the board should have a copy of this presentation in front of them this evening. I'm providing you an update as part of a continuing process for addressing the Methacton High School campus. On Slide 2, you will see that this evening, as a reminder, there is a motion on the agenda for your approval next week. It reads the following. Approve the administration to prepare recommendations for a comprehensive high school campus plan that engages the board-approved architect, owner's representative, and solicitor, provides no less than three concept designs with estimated cost, timelines, and impact for the new high school, and provides a public input on concept designs and provides recommendations and feedback to be presented at a special meeting in the future. On Slide 3, just a quick note. This is a quick visual representation of what we're talking about in terms of the high school campus. We're trying to plan for all the structures and the space that's available so that as a school district, we can make the best decision for the next 50 years. On the next slide, you will see that in summary, we know that from a Facilities Assessment with Conditions Report, that the district office likely by 2028 will begin the need for about $1.1 million in renovation work. The transportation building, about $332,000 in renovation work. Methacton High School, about $69 million in renovation work, for a total of $70 million. This does not include the campus sewer plant, maintenance, renovation, repairs, and the campus parking lots, paving, or any other work other than the building. We also presented back in January 23rd of 2024, on Slide 5, I believe it is, that we had a current budget and debt service of bonds of $9.4 million. The debt service accounts for about 7.1% of the current budget. We also had our public financial management firm provide borrowing scenarios of $100 million borrowing and its impact on taxes, a scenario of $140 million, and a scenario of $180 million. It is noted that all those scenarios are based on current rates of interest at the market at that time on the average home value of $444,000. We also then presented on February 20th, the following options for your consideration. Our owner's rep, Dewey Engineering, presented Option 1, which is really considered the in-place option. And we were looking at that option being anywhere from a cost of $95 million to about $99 million. We also presented Option 2, which is a renovation of the existing We also presented Option 2, which is a renovation of the existing structure, but a new construction of the auditorium and the natatorium or the pool additions. We estimated that that pre-conceptual cost would be anywhere from $112 million to about $118 million. An Option 3 was presented, and that was the same as Option 2 with the exception that we would also add new classroom spaces, and that option, pre-conceptual option, was estimated to be about $148 million to about $156 million. And Option 4 was broken down into Part A and Part B, and that is located on Slide 9 of this presentation. With respects to the both of these, we were talking about new construction. The difference between A and B generally is the square footage, where we had Option A, the square footage of 308,000 square feet, and we said that that would be somewhere estimated between $175 million and $183 million. And Option 4B, estimated about 345,000 square feet, which is larger than the existing square footage of the high school currently, which is 320,000 square feet, at a cost of $196 million to $205 million. In addition, on the next slide, we had a presentation that took the priorities from the Mathacton High School Campus Planning Committee process, and we took those priorities on a high level and tried to address, see which one of those and how well we could address any of those within the options that were just previously presented. You can see this heat map, red would mean that the matter was not accomplished, and with green being that it was nearly fully accomplished. Given the fact that Option 4 generally has all green areas, has green dots simulating that we are able to accomplish most, if not all, of those priorities from the Campus Planning Committee. On the next slide, we, as part of this process, we conducted a survey. The survey opened on February 26, and it lasted through Monday, March 18. It was distributed on the website through email blast and through social media, and it resulted in 513 responses. So this evening, I just wanted to share with you those responses. If you look at the stakeholder group, you can see that about 71% of the respondents were parents, guardian, or other of a current student, with the least amount from staff, and then community members making up about 18.9%. In question number one, it stated that which of the four pre-conceptual options presented by the superintendent do you find most appealing to explore further? We saw that 53.8% recommended Option 4, where 12.9% thought Option 3 was the most appealing. On the next slide, that would be Slide 13, we see that questions, which of the four pre-conceptual options presented by the superintendent do you find least appealing to further explore? We've seen that 60.6% recommended Option 1 being the least appealing, and some smaller fragment of Option 2 is the smallest amount there. I can't read it on my chart. I do apologize for that. And then the next question is, how much is it, how important is it that the Mathacton High School Campus Plan, the focus on educational space improvements? And the response was 70.8% thought it was very important that we focus on educational space improvements. On the next slide, how important was it to focus on new curricular opportunities? And 57.7% thought that was important. How important was it to focus on campus safety? 79.9% thought that was important. When we look at Page 15 or Slide 15, how important is it for the campus plan to focus on the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, and inclusive accessibility? 62% thought that was very important. How important is it to focus on the building layout and student movement? 50.5% thought that was very important. On the next slide, how important was it to focus on sustainability and energy efficiency? 43, I'm sorry, 45% said somewhat important, and 43.7% said very important. The next question was, how important is it to focus on heating, ventilation, and air conditioning? 62.4% thought that was important or very important. Slide number 17, how important is it to focus on natatorium or the pool improvements? And we, the feedback was 47.4% thought it was somewhat important. In terms of how important is it to focus on the auditorium improvements, we've seen that 47.2% thought it was somewhat important. On the next slide, how important is it to focus on the district office improvements? And 46.2% thought it was not important to focus on that. How important is the Mathacton High School Campus Plan to consider disruption from construction on the education and learning? And 61.4% thought it was very important to focus on that. So these, all these graphs and the results are posted on the district website under the campus, Mathacton High School Campus Planning Committee portion of the website. On the next slide, which is Slide 19, we also, during this process, collected information through two public forums. We held those on two evenings, one on February 29 and one on March 11. Generally, we've had about, I would say, from 15 to 18 people in attendance for both of those sessions. From that, we received a lot of questions, and we also received questions via email from members who attended after the fact or attended just knowing that we could take questions from the public generally. So there were a number of questions provided. We categorized them the best we could in terms of, was it a financial type of question? Was it a general question, or was it a process-based question? So we categorized 30 financial questions, 47 general questions, and 34 process questions. And again, these are all located on the Mathacton High School Campus Planning website. So just a sample of some of these, certainly I'm not going through all of these, but I think it's important to know that some of the process questions were, what does "there are no requirements for referendum vote" mean? And the response is, Act 1 requires a voter referendum if the district proposes to increase the real estate tax rate over the Act 1 index. If required, the district must submit a referendum question in the next primary election stating the proposed tax rate and the rate at which it will be levied to the electors of the school district, and the majority of the electors voting on the question must approve the proposed tax rate. The next, one of the other questions were, are you estimating that a referendum will happen? Response, we believe that a referendum will not be required, given the borrowing scenarios and the range of costs associated with the pre-conceptual options. Another example, there should be an Option 5, new property, new campus, eye on the future, everything centralized. Response, locating a property within two townships that can provide the space and central location has been considered. We may find that this option must be explored further, given the outcome of the pre-conceptual measures under further exploration under Option 4. And the last sample, again, these are on the website, please explain why voting on a path forward for a new high school, Option 4, while completely ignoring all the other most or more cost-effective alternatives is the best interest of the taxpayers? Response, Options 1, 2, and 3 are estimated to be less costly, at the same time, address fewer of the priorities, considering the taxpayer ensures that we further explore Option 4 to determine if there is the best investment in the school community for the next 50 years. If we go to the next slide, some of the general questions are as follows. What is MEP? Response, M stands for mechanical, E for electrical, P for plumbing. Next question, will asbestos removal impact the students? Response, asbestos removal, if needed, will take place under the safety practices outlined in federal law and is often done in summer months outside the window of normal student or other public access. Question 3, what would the number of seats in a new auditorium be? Response, there have not been definitive determinations on seat count. Feedback from the Mathacton High School Campus Planning Committee ranged from seating for 800 to 1,600. Furthermore, the seating in an auditorium is associated with seating in other spaces, including the gymnasium. The challenge is that there are no spaces in the high school that bring the entire student body together. This is the feedback that we need to consider in greater detail. Next sample question, projected enrollment for the next 50 years and the basis for the projection? Will a new building or removal, renovated building be the right size going forward? Which options are more flexible if the projections turn out to be incorrect? Response, the current enrollment projections are for the next 10 years and can be located here. There's a link, the enrollment projections are done about three years ago, and the current high school is a combination of the original junior high school and high schools. This now has the capacity for 2,150 students. Using Options 3 and 4, the district can right-size the building to accommodate the student population of about 1,700 students. On the next slide, which would be Slide 22, there's some financial questions here. What is the borrowing cap? Response, according to the report issued by Public Financial Management, the Mathacton School District's financial advisor, the remaining borrowing capacity as of the date of the presentation, January 23, 2024, is 201 million. Assuming that the borrowing for a renovation new construction takes place over a three-year, three-to-four-year period, and during that same three, four-year period, the district continues to experience moderate increases in assessed property value while paying down existing debt, that availability limit will increase. Next question, what is the current annual cost to operate the sewer plant compared to affluent charges by lower Providence? Response, the sewer plant is not separately metered for electric. Below is the estimated electrical with other known annual planned expenses. So that chart is over to the right on the slide, and it says, environmental operator, about $17,000, lab testing, about $28,000, pollution insurance, about $19,500, electricity estimated about $15,000, for a total of $79,500 on an annual operating basis. In the response, it also talked about 30% was, $30,000 was spent at the end of 2022 for maintenance to the sand beds. We also have renewed the NPDS permit every three years at a cost of $3,000. The above cost in the chart does not include other labor and expenses for general maintenance and upkeep. Using the Arcola Skyview Campus as a benchmark, same number of grades in high school, and upsizing for farina and transportation, it is estimated that the annual affluent charges to LP would be approximately $28,705 for collection and $22,440 for treatment for an annual cost of $51,145. And the last question on, under financial as a sample, is the $54.29 over and above the normal tax increase to cover salaries, benefits, and operating costs, et cetera? Response, the scenarios listed below represent the estimated tax impact on borrowing for these limited amounts only for average district property valued at $444,000. This does not take into account a consideration, other cost increases in the annual operating And the last slide for the presentation this evening, as a reminder, I'll take questions, but it is the motion that's listed on the screen there and the one that's on the agenda. Other questions from members of the board? Ms. Austin?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. So I was looking back at old information that I had still in my files, and I was looking at a draft of the Arrowhead Forward project from 2019, I think. And one of the things that was in the timeline was about establishing board goals based on options to solve for. And I feel like what I would like to see more of, maybe with this presentation, or certainly in the future, the, the Arrowhead Forward timeline included these goals, and then we went into the debt analysis, and then we went into the community feedback. And I feel like that's the, the goals of what we're trying to solve for is sort of a missing piece that's not really being, I think, fully expressed in these presentations. So for example, I also pulled out the old strategic plan, including a strategic plan update that we heard in April 2023, and looking at those, we're talking about increased access of student participation as a goal, increased participation in activities and athletics as a goal, evaluating student start times as a goal, you know, special ed. We were just talking about the transitional programming. I really want to see something more about not looking at the past, that this is the school we have, and it's in various states of disrepair in various areas. I want to see something that where we look forward. What is the educational programming we are hoping to deliver to our students? And how would whatever option get us there? It's a little bit with the, you know, red, yellow, green touches on that a little bit, but I want to see how will a new school enable us to change our scheduling, our start times included, but have that lunch and learn? Right now, there are students who need help after school, which the teachers can provide. Teachers are there after school for the students, but many students can't go after school because their parents are unable to pick them up at 3 o'clock or 3:30, and the same with clubs. So how would, that's what we're solving for. We're solving for all these issues that I think are maybe kind of unspoken, and maybe you don't know about these issues unless you are in the school or you're talking to the teachers. You know, how can we include and get our music and arts participation? How, and one of the questions that we had with Arrowhead was, are the learning spaces sized and/or located in a proper manner to support the instructional program? Are there, are there classroom suggestions that should be considered in order for us to allow an improvement in the delivery of the instructional program? So when we're looking at our art rooms, for example, that have no windows and no ventilation, to me, that's less of a facility issue, and it's really more of a programming issue. That's not the art program that we want to provide. So I want to see something more about, this is what we want to have for our students in Mathacton, and this is what we need to get there. I feel like we're hearing a lot of looking back. I want way more looking forward presentation, please.
Yeah, and I really appreciate you bringing that up because that's exactly what we want to do. The recommendation here allows us to actually do that planning. In all fairness, what you have here and what you've been hearing for the last several months is really just a reflection of what our concerns are. And, you know, some of the concerns have drowned out the, you know, the voice of really good programming that can be provided, but some of that's in the Mathacton High School Campus Planning documents as well. But that's where the work with our architect becomes, you know, a vital component to draw that out with, you know, small group meetings with our teachers, with different departments, and allow us to then to not only structure it in terms of its physical space, but how to take program and future learning opportunities and incorporate that to make the best of that delivery, because the space is important to the delivery of the program. And so we bring our teachers on board with the process, we bring our students on board, we bring our community on board with the process. The architects have the experience in drawing those type of things out. Do we have an idea of what all the things are yet? But the exact specifics and the way our teachers want the lab set up, or the way our teachers, you know, want the apartment program, as an example, to be arranged? teachers, you know, want the apartment program, as an example, to be arranged, like, I can't, I can't speak to those things because I'm not the expert in those, in those areas. And that's why, you know, moving forward with a recommendation that's before you allows the architect, if, if they're so approved, to help us develop that in terms of the concepts will be not only physical, but also programmatically. Here's how we're going to deliver, and this is why this physical space, you know, provides the, the necessary space for those, those particular programs. So I think you're, you're spot on. I think, I think myself included, as well as many others, are really looking forward to talking about what is ahead of us, what can we do to, to, you know, make Mathacton, you know, the, the most, the best it can be for the, for the next fifty years. But yes, you've been only hearing about what are the challenges? And we have, we'd have not put forward any solutions because we need this, this process. We either go down a process with Plan Four, Plan One, Plan Two, Plan Three, no matter which of those processes, it, it requires that conversation with the, with our teachers, with our students, and our school community to start focusing on the future. So thank you. Ms. Steel?
Just thank you for this, and thank you for that explanation as well. I just, kind of going off of what Ms. Austin said, but also building off of that, just a connection that I had, because the, the one pie chart didn't necessarily surprise me, the importance of improving the district office, district office improvements, which I am inferring that many people just thought, that's your office, your office, and that's where you do your work, and it's not educational environment. I think in telling and going forward, it would be important to share that that's where the district computers are. And I don't speak computer, so I'm going to sound like I don't right now, but that's where all the big black pieces that take up a whole room for the computer software, hardware are. And it's really important to keep those in, in a building that is in a room that is made to keep them healthy. I have worked for a cyber school where the computers melted, and our online learning environment disappeared for three days, and we could do nothing. And that has a direct impact on our students' education. So I think it's important, and that would be really good information to share, because it's not just how comfortable your working environment is, but it's also direct impact on our students and our teachers' learning environment.
Yeah. Ms. Steel, you, you said that well, but I, I will, I will say this, I would have put the administrative building on the bottom of my list as well. And, and, and the only reason is, you know, we should be putting money forward into, into our students, and, and that, that's what we've been doing. And that's why we have, you know, the administration building, it, it looks like it was when it was originally built, you know, back in the sixties. So, and, and no, no disrespect, the, the, the challenge is just that, you know, where, where is the best opportunity lie to have an administration office, a central office, whether it's in a separate building or incorporated into a high school? And, and, and how does that provide benefits? And how does that create opportunities? Or how is that, you know, a hindrance to, to the process? So that really, while, while conceptually, we're talking about, hey, it's probably going to be long-term, less expensive to incorporate it into a, a new structure, it might have some safety or other, you know, implications that really have to still be developed. So we're in a, we, these, I don't have like specific answers for you this evening, but, but I, I would have to agree with the survey results that we wouldn't be putting money in the administration building before we put money into the high school or into students and teachers. Yep. So thank, other comments? Ms. Perdue?
Thank you for the presentation. I do have, and I agree, great points by Ms. Austin. I think Arrowhead, we did have some points. I'm wondering if that maybe came a little bit later in the process for it. And then Ms. Steel, thank you also for your comments. In reference to the recommendation, I think it may also be good because you have the steps of what's to happen, maybe having some timeline on it, right? Because when I look at it, I'm, I'm looking like when we say, provide no less than three concepts, like, when do we expect that to be? And if you don't have that, that's fine, I'm just wondering if it'll be helpful for us to kind of have a little bit more, when, when we come next week to vote on this, whether, if the information sits well with others?
No, that, that's a great question, and thank you for, for asking that. We, we, we've answered that in some of the public forums, so some of the members had similar question. So according to Dewey Engineering, Josh Greis estimates that it'll take about six months for us to be back in front of the board and, and the public through that type of a process. So, you know, it's, assuming this gets, gets approved, and we start, you know, the, the work in sometime in, in April, it's, you know, probably six months from that timeframe, we should be able to be, you know, in front of the public with design concepts and then having a public presentation.
And then I just had one, as I was thinking, when Dr. Graveney's presented on the comprehensive plan for special education, I know one of the items she mentioned was with the transition services. I know one of the schools we visited had an in-house apartment, right? And it was something that I think she said she was afraid to put in her three-year plan because she don't have, you know, pretty much don't want to commit to something that we haven't, the board haven't made a decision yet as far as where we'll go. So I do like the point brought up about looking forward, right? Knowing the things that we want to do based on our strategic plan and the type of education environment we want to provide to our students, I think that's important to keep that front. I did think it may be helpful, you have that on the high school planning committee, you have the roadmap, right?
Yes.
And I, I don't know, I feel like even if it's in the backup slide, always just to have it, just so when the presentation gets picked up, people have the, where we are from and where we are coming from, and then what's, you know, forward-looking also, I think that may be helpful.
That's a great suggestion. Thank you. I'll, I'll include that going forward.
Okay. And I have something else that I forgot, so thank you.
Ms. Kangaro?
No, I just wanted to reemphasize that, as the board, we have a new board here in January that just started. And so I think we have a really great advantage, better than we had in Arrowhead, because we had this Mathacton Campus Committee come together, and everything was about the educational space, you know, improvement, new curriculum opportunities, ADA. So I feel like we have sixty-four goals of what they, the community truly wants from us. So I definitely think it is our thing now is to go into our committees, review this information, and really work together to do the board goals, like you said. I would think now we have an opportunity that we have got more feedback than we've ever had in, from a community. So I think it's definitely, this is the next step, what you're saying, and getting very focused so that we know exactly what we're going to do, and then bringing back our strategic plan, which I know you bring in in April or May, and, and align them again so that we're, we're putting it all together. So I definitely agree that we're going in the right direction, but if we are planning for the future, it def, we should be, we should be ourselves be focused, and that's, I, I like that idea.
Thank you, Ms. Kangaro. Any other questions of members of the board? Seeing no other questions, thank you for, for your feedback, and.
Dr. Zerbi Weiss, take a seat, I just remembered. Now, is there still opportunity for members of the public to keep providing you with feedback?
Is, is there still an opportunity to provide feedback? Well, certainly, we vote, we always take feedback on information at mathacton.org. So that's the best way, or they can send emails to me directly. So either place would be fine. But we, we did close the forum at twelve, the, the survey at twelve noon on Monday, and we don't have any current public forums scheduled. Certainly, once we make a determination next week as to whether we move forward with the recommendation or some modification, or whatever it may be, we'll create some new timelines that kind of give us, you know, what's going on, what's going to happen within the, the six-month period to do that work. So with that, we're going to move on to the rest of the agenda. Next week, we also have the Spirit of Mathacton Awards for Arcola. We have the twenty-four, twenty-five budget status. Mr. Bicker will provide a brief update from the Finance Committee this month. And then we have Dr. Sir, Dr. Regina providing the annual student performance update. We'll have committee reports, we'll have public comment, and then we'll, you know, we'll approve the minute meetings, and then we'll do fiscal items. Mr. Bicker?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. This month for approval will be the List of Bills, Treasurers Report, Budgetary Transfer, the Bond Resolution twenty-four oh one that I mentioned in my presentation earlier today, the EV Charging Station, which is to approve Cedar Electric to install the electric charging stations, at a cost of eighty-three thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars. There will also be a forty-two thousand five hundred dollar PICO grant used to offset these costs. Approved the district also to acquire four electric vans for the Facilities Department using capital project funds of estimated two hundred and forty thousand dollars. We'll also have the Waste Removal and Recycling. This bid was placed out by the IU. The lowest bidder was Waste Management Services at a cost of two hundred and forty thousand eighty-eight dollars and two cents over a three-year period, or eighty thousand twenty-nine dollars thirty-four cents per year. This is an increase of twenty-seven thousand eighty-one dollars and thirty-one cents. A student activity account for the esports. Branding services is presented by Ms. Kelly today. The Technology Capital Expenditure Report for twenty-four, twenty-five, in a not-to-exceed amount of one million forty-five thousand dollars. There's two Master Plan twenty-twenty-four projects. Approved Clipper Pipe and Service of Edison PA, total bid amount of eighty, eight hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars to perform a chiller replacement at Warrsester Elementary, and approved Miller Sports Construction of Westchester PA to provide repair and maintenance services for Arcola Intermediate School Tennis Courts at a cost of one hundred and twenty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. And then finally, two motions for the Arrowhead Elementary. Approved Green Ridge Landscaping Inc. of Northtown PA to install thirty-nine trees at Arrowhead Elementary at a cost of sixteen thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars, and approved Eagleville Fence Company of Eagleville PA to install fencing at Arrowhead at a cost of seven thousand six hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Bicker. Does anyone have questions on any particular matters? Mr. Winters?
Yeah, I, I, for some reason, I'm, my memory's not probably good, but I thought that the Warrsester Chiller was a twenty-twenty-five project. Is that actually this summer?
The Warrsester Chiller is twenty-twenty-four, the Warrsester Entrance is twenty-twenty-five.
Okay.
The project actually is going to take place in twenty-twenty-five, is that not correct?
That is correct. It will actually start in late fall, twenty-twenty-four, and go into twenty-twenty-five.
Any, any other questions on items? Ms. Graff?
Yeah, I just had a comment on the Technology Capital Expenditure. I know we had a conversation, and I just wanted to make a note that we'll be having some additional conversations to make sure we understand exactly what's included in that cost so we can be ready for next week.
Exactly. Thank you. And I'll make those arrangements through Dr. Sergini. Okay. There are questions with matters of financial? Ms. Austin?
Yeah, thank you. Nine F, the Waste Removal and Recycling, the motion is for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five through, I think that needs to be changed.
You are correct.
With waste management. And my other question was, is it an increase of twenty-seven thousand a year or twenty-seven thousand over the three years?
Twenty-seven thousand eighty-one dollars per year.
Is the increase?
Is the increase.
And then my question also was, with Arrowhead, the, the trees, was that, is that part of, like, the agreement with the neighbors kind of a thing? Okay. And then the fencing, where's the fencing? Also, is that between the, with the neighbors? Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on matters of finance? Seeing none, we'll move on to Personnel Items. Dr. Sergini?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi, for the consideration of the board this month. The personnel items are as follows. One resignation classified, Gabrielle Agendra, Secretary to the Athletic Director, effective March twenty-second. We thank Gabby for her excellent service to the students of Mathacton, and we wish her well. The approval of two job descriptions, Assistant Director of Technology and System Administrator, as presented earlier this evening. One employment classified, Erin Pratt, Recess Assistant at Woodland, we welcome Erin to Mathacton. One change of status, classified Christopher Kleingunther from Coordinator of Technology at Farina to Assistant Director of Technology at Farina, effective July first. One uncompensated leave professional, Laura Poncello, elementary instructor at Eagleville for the dates listed. One uncompensated leave classified, William Murphy, Bus Assistant at Transportation for the dates listed, supplemental contracts, contracts rather, for high school semi-formal curriculum instruction and assessment and Pupil Services Department contracts, and also additional spring coaches. The addition of Michael Feliciano to the classified substitute list for custodial, we welcome Michael. The elimination of one position classified, Coordinator of Technology, as presented earlier, that would be effective July one. And the addition of two Community Education Swim Instructors, Caitlin Kenning and Kelly Summers, we thank Caitlin and Kelly for taking on these new positions. Thank you.
Any questions to my right on, Mr. Winters?
Yeah, I think I recall that Mr. Spink has not been moved over to Skyview at this point.
That's correct.
Because we're waiting to release, but still, is there any plan in place? It's a very busy time for the Athletic Department, I imagine, with coordination and spring sports. Do we have a backup plan to support the resignation?
We do. We're using a casual and call individuals that have worked in that office and in the high school in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions to my right on Personnel? To my left, Ms. Kangaro?
I think unfortunately, the semi-formal was canceled, so I'm not sure if we have to remove that supplemental contract.
If that's the case, then absolutely we would.
Any other comments and questions to my left? Seeing none? We move on to curriculum and programs. Dr. Regina?
This is just the action item to approve the Special Ed Comp Plan, which will not be approved until April twenty-fourth, but it has to sit for the twenty-eight days for inspection. So this is just the item for the agenda.
And then matters of policy?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. For first read, really nothing major in these policies, really just some formatting and pronoun edits for the specific policies, along with some of the updates of shifting the Director of Labor Relations and Human Resources Individual to the Assistant Superintendent to be more reflective of our organizational chart. For those items that will be voted on next week for second read, again, the working periods, three thirty-two, had some language change based on Act Fifty-Six, which is the nine-hundred-ninety hour requirement versus one-hundred-and-eighty-day, the now-or statement, that is no longer the and statement by state law. The Professional Development one of three thirty-three had some new mandates based to the new induction program for new teachers. And vacation language of three thirty-seven, we wanted to be more reflective of the practice that we do. It isn't necessarily a board approval of vacation, but an administrative approval of vacation, and we wanted that to be more reflective of what we do here in the district. And those are my updates for this week.
Any questions to my right on policy? Seeing none. To my left? Seeing none. Thank you, Dr. Regina. And under other, we have gift and donations to approve a generous gift of charities Aid Foundation America to support one or more programs at Woodland Elementary School in the amount of one hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty cents. Another one is approve a generous gift of fundraising efforts of the Arrowhead Home and School Association for the purchase of a book vending machine and the books in the amount of ten thousand one hundred and four dollars and ninety cents. The following trips, they approved the Mathacton High School trip to participate in the PMEA All-State Chorus and Orchestra Festival as the dates listed and location listed. Transportation, to prove Michelle DeAngelis as a driver, the MCiu. So next week, we will do a, an election of the, for the post of a three-year representative to the Montgomery County Intermediate Board. Currently, I believe Ms. Perdue serves the unexpired term from the outgoing board member. This would be for the, for that new term effective July one, twenty-twenty-four. This would be for the, for that new term effective July 1, 2024. There will be some information on that in the board memo for your, for your review. School Safety, we have approved Cardinal Point Security Group to conduct the 2024 Physical Risk and Vulnerability Report for the Methacton School District at a cost of $19,800. Design Services, as presented by Dr. Sergini earlier this evening, with the contract for Schrader Group of Philadelphia to provide design services based on the review of the contract by the solicitor. And then the High School Campus Planning Process with a motion to approve the Administration Repair Recommendations for a Confidence of High School Campus Plan that includes the listed bulleted items below. And that ends the agenda for this evening. I'll turn it back over to Madam President. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Questions on the others? I apologize. Ms. Perdue?
Yeah, so I have two. One is on 13A2. Do you have a little bit more information on the vending machine, the book vending machine?
We do have information. Would you like to have that?
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to know, like, so they're funding for the upstart of it, and they will maintain it?
I need to look in what the maintenance of that be, that'll be.
And then also, would the, how, what is the process for the books for the students? Are they just going there requesting a book? Is it free, or is it, is it a cost to the students? Is it reduced?
How about we have Dr. Roberts put together a comprehensive piece of information that'll show you what we're doing with all that?
Okay, thank you. And then my second question is for 13E1. Dr. Sergini, or I don't know if you have it. I was just wondering what the Physical Risk and Vulnerability Report composed of?
This report looks at all of our school buildings as well as our policies, practices, and procedures associated with safety, and provides us relevant feedback regarding those and how best to continue those with best practices.
Okay, so then, when, so would that be conducted in 2024? Or would that be?
That's correct, in 2024. It will take several months to do that.
Several months, okay, thank you.
Any other questions to members to my right on anything under Other? To my left, any other questions? Other, that ends the items.
We'll move on to Old Business. Do we have anything for Old Business? Okay.
Well, I do. I want to bring up a matter, so I need to make an executive session announcement. So, and this is timely. The board met in an executive session that was held virtually on March 4, 2024, for the purposes of discussing matters of school safety and security and receiving a report from the District School Safety and Security Coordinator as required by Section 1309-B of the Public School Code. Secondly, the board also met in an executive session that was held virtually on March 11, 2024, for the purpose of discussing a matter of personnel involving an appointed administrative employee of the district.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Perdue?
Can we get an update on Audubon? Thank you.
We can ask Mr. Kenwood to join us next month with an update. Or I'm not next month, but next week. Yeah.
Any other, thanks for Old Business. Mr. Mersky?
I wanted to suggest the request that we include a more detailed review of the Right to Know requests, including, like, similar to what we do occasionally in the Finance Committee.
So do you want, you want that then brought to the work session? Or are you suggesting we put it in the work session?
I'm suggesting, I wanted to suggest it during the finance meeting, but we were having trouble with my connection since I was out of town. But I think we should be reviewing it on a monthly basis.
Here, here in the work session or in the voting meeting?
Work session or the, or the regular board meeting, either way.
If there's no objection to that from the members of the board, we'll proceed in putting something together based on that recommendation. But then we'll share that with the Board President and Vice President, and then out to the board to make sure that the information that, you know, that we're providing is what the board so desires as part of a monthly process.
No, that, I appreciate it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for Old Business? Anything for New Business? Yes. Ms. Clary?
Thank you. Just a, just a couple of things that I wanted to report out from on the committee meetings that I had this month. So I promised the Methacton Coordinating Council that I would reiterate that they are looking for parent volunteers for the home and school positions that are, they're trying to get the nominations for next year. Skyview and Arcola really need parents to help out. So if you have any interest, please go to the websites of the various schools, go to the Home and School page, and then you can reach out to the current board members for information. Secondly, I promised that I would also mention post-prom. It's my understanding that they still need at least 80 volunteers, and they're really in need in the 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM shift for set for Friday into Saturday. And it's things like cleanup, which people don't need clearances for, and then security, which you would need clearances for. And then finally, last thing I want to say is thank you to the Methacton Education Foundation for a phenomenal dodgeball tournament. It was really a lot of fun. I want to thank the board members that participated in our team. And I need to thank all, or congratulate all of the winners and
You can say it. It's okay, you can say it.
And congratulate the Farina Fireballs on their win, and Dr. Regina, Dr. Zerbi, and I think Coach Amanda. Great job. So that's that.
Fantastic. Anything else for New Business? If I could only reiterate the post-prom, we definitely need people to come out. Financial donations would be fantastic, and then the volunteering, definitely, would be much appreciated. All right, we'll now move to courtesy of the floor. The Board of School Directors will now provide an opportunity for residents to make comments on matters that are or may be before the board. The board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. The Board of School Directors may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments. Please submit questions via email to information@methacton.org.
Good evening. John Andrews, Lower Providence. Earlier today, the administration put on the website the survey and Q and A relative to the high school campus. And I want to give my interpretation of a quick look at, at those things. There were a lot of smart, cogent, and telling comments included. People have a feeling that the campus studies are incomplete relative to going forward for any action, such as option four, in terms of what is available today. And along those lines, there were a comment about gut feelings versus quantitative study of many issues. So there are updates needed. Why the rush? Cost is not important, apparently, for a new high school. That's wrong. Possibility of a lousy new high school site. Financing issues, impermeability issues. Money for a new high school investment comes with limits on faculty salaries over an extended period. Also borrowing likely, likely will be too close to the debt limits, and that creates uncertain hazards in the future. There were good responses, especially parents in the community. Option 1 to 3, interest, 46%. Least appealing, option 4, 32%. High school, very interested, 62%. Pool fix, very interested or somewhat interested, 76%. Auditorium improvement, 81%. Farina, fix it in place, 54%. Wide interest in options 1, 2, and 3, ahead of option 4 study. That needs to be repeated, but I think you can do that mentally. Weak cost concerns for the option 1, 2, and 3 study. Tax rises, not total costs of bonds payback as requested, including interest and fees. Methacton just wants to talk about tax rises. I sent an email to the board earlier today relative to what are the
I'm sorry, thank you, the three minutes, I apologize.
Could I have another half minute?
Unfortunately, you have to keep to the limit. Thank you.
I guess that's in the Constitution somewhere. Thank you.
Jim Malik, Worcester. Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Schrader and Dahui just did North Penn High School. So I think you forgot that one. I could be wrong. Ms. Cancro, you kind of scared me a little bit when you talked about how the High School Planning Committee voiced what the community wanted. It's 144 people, self-interested people, and you're going to rely on that as the voice of the community? That's like 0.003% of the population. That scares me. Regarding your new high school, the narrative put out by Dr. Zerbi was that the HVAC project was put on hold because of cost. Okay? There's several problems with that. Number one, emails show that KCBA were the ones who suggested putting this thing on hold after they came in with their $42 million estimate. The cost in 2020 was really 9.3 million, but in 2022, KCBA estimated 42 million. That's a 350% increase in two years, and nobody questions that? That's the whole basis for you building your high school. The emails also showed that Dr. Zerbi was talking about a new high school with KCBA and Bureau Veritas before October. What's that about? So the real reason was not because of the cost. You had a plan ahead of time. I was going to hand you guys some information to look at here, but Dr. Zerbi refuses to let you have it. What it is, I got it through the Right to Know process, and it's the draft studies by BV. Three drafts, one in November of '22, and the first page shows that the 10-year FCI was 28%. The 2123 draft showed it was 33.7% after there was input by the district. So the first study didn't get what you wanted. You didn't get the results. There was discussion and feedback, and now the FCI gets boosted up to 33%. Then you get the final report, and the FCI, 10-year FCI, is 72%. How'd that happen, Dave? What kind of feedback did you give Bureau Veritas to have us go from everything's fine in 10 years to 72%? Plus, KCBA also created another category that's not even part of what's going on, 30 to 60%. Whole thing's got to be scrapped. You can't vote on this thing on Tuesday. Okay? You can't. Regarding the branding development, what a waste of 60K. The way you brand is by reputation. Test scores, ranking, and how you get your college admissions going, right? Going to waste 60K? Put that money to the kids, let them get a tutor.
Thank you. Is there any comments or, oh, sorry. Sorry about that, I apologize.
Julia Nuckley, Lower Providence. I was pleasantly surprised to see electric vans. I hope that gets approved. I think that's a good step forward towards hopefully eventually getting electric buses, which, as we know, improves the health of students and as well as the climate. And a recent study has shown that school districts with electric buses actually have an increase in attendance because the students are absent fewer days for health reasons. So yes, I applaud that. I hope it gets approved, and I hope it paves the way for electric school buses. The Arrowhead trees, I hope that the plan is to plant native trees because they tend to survive better. In terms of branding, I would like to see, hopefully, downplaying of the Native American head. My daughter is a junior at the high school, and she has always avoided any sort of spirit where that has the Native American head. It bothers her, I feel like, you know, especially if you don't have the buy-in of the Leni Lenape people, that that should be phased out. And there was mention of starting high school later. I would very much, very much like to see that happen. That helps the, these health and well-being of the students. It will help them academically because students, once kids hit puberty, their melatonin shifts, so they can't fall asleep until later, but they still need eight or nine hours of sleep. And what we're doing is we're shortening that sleep. The most important part of the sleep cycle is the end of the sleep cycle. This is when memory consolidation happens and affects behavior, and those are very important for high school students, and that is the part that they're losing because of our early, early high school start times. And then I just wanted to know for the tennis court repair for the Arcola Tennis Courts, when that's going to happen? Because tennis practice actually just, just started yesterday. So hopefully, it won't interfere with that. And then finally, I would like to ask that the board consider extending the duration of the courtesy of the floor to four minutes, which is what it was pre-pandemic. And then once the pandemic hit, and you had many, many people speaking, it was shortened to three minutes. Now we've gotten back to a much smaller number of people speaking in the meetings. I would like to ask that it be moved to four minutes.
Thank you. Sorry, thank you very much. Okay, is there any, anyone that would like to comment? Or I will say, we do have information about the tennis courts, but I don't have it on hand about when we were going to be doing the Arcola. Yes, Dr. Sergini?
That will not interfere with the times for tennis for the students. It will be over the summer.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Winters, can I have a second? Ms. Alston? Thank you very much, everyone. Have a lovely evening.